Take the survey and have the people out there, remember we talked to a lot of people that wanted to take it, they couldn't get through or didn't get a card, even a person on the board, I don't mention his name, he didn't even get a card. So who got my card? Who got his card? Somebody going in on my number and filling stuff out, I don't know, you know? But I mean, this is stuff that we've been begging, I mean, Jeanette, I mean, we know the board hates Jeanette. They hate me because we're outspoken, okay? Okay, I'm sorry. There's been people, there's been people that told them they don't like her. They've told me the same thing. I don't care if people like me, I like all of you. Steve's an old friend of mine, Bill, I mean, he's done business up here, you guys are great guys. But we've got qualified people that could help with this survey. And I don't think these questions on the survey, I don't like them. I mean, do I live by that? I live by that. You didn't ask me if I live by that. There's questions there that, I mean, just ramble on. I don't like the survey. And like I know, we're pressed for time, I mean, the biggest fraud was after that little meltdown at the last meeting of the board, when the supervisor went off on his little tangent at the end, is as important as this then, planning commission is on this master plan, they canceled the meeting again. Another meeting. I mean, we've been trying to get this thing going a long time, we see canceled meetings, I mean, you know what? All I hear is from, all I hear from him is the law pertaining to what he can do to stop me from getting information and getting a timely manner of getting information. You know, I mean, I'm not trying to feed up on anybody, I mean, we didn't get this posting until five, five something the other night for this meeting. I mean, I like to go to and read stuff, we're all busy too, doesn't give us much time to read the stuff either, or research. I mean, the man who wanted to even take away our call to the public in the first couple, I mean, it just makes it worse. It's like that snowballs roll down the hill, helping mistakes and all the problems, it just keep bigger and bigger and bigger. And like I said, I just, we're not getting nothing done. And I know that mentioning about it has probably taken up a lot of time too, but you know what? I don't want to be your enemy. But I'm just saying, I'm tired of mistakes. And you know, our supervisor said for last week until half qualified, everybody was up there, and we're still getting mistakes. They vote themselves races, they can do that, they didn't make their mistakes on races and bonuses. Kurt, you're a board member, this has gotta be disturbing me, all the mistakes. There's another, there's a meeting coming up next couple weeks, and they got two different postings for one at six o'clock, one at seven o'clock. You know, and you know what, this is the worst part about it, please, I don't want to be Pam's enemy. You know, I talked to the woman last working, and she specifically told me, not her responsibility. She's the clerk. There's people's responsibilities under her to do these things, and she's responsible to overlook it. The woman told me it's not her job. Make it how much a year, maybe it's not the best, you know, if these people are that qualified, maybe they should have these jobs, maybe they should go get a federal one. But in the meantime, back in the past, we used to have farmers and people, regular people in the community do this stuff. They didn't get paid the big dollars. You did it for your community too. I mean, I want them to get paid, I want them to get paid well. But the mistakes and the misinformation and the not giving us, I mean, Mike loves that. Oh, I don't have to do this, I, this is why I don't, you know, you've done everything you can to get around everything. Bullshit. Sorry, excuse my language, everybody. He works for us. Not just me, but you know what? How about timely manner, give some information. I don't care what he has to do, we're asking. Give us a little time. I don't want to be nothing, you know, as you, you know, I, I want to sit down and have a beer with you and bullshit, you know, I don't want to screw around with stuff. But you know, we gotta get this stuff done, and we're not gonna get it done, because the paperwork's not getting handled properly, and the survey's not getting handled properly. And I'd like to see more people be involved in it, I don't think we're gonna get it because we've had too many mess ups with this thing. Thank you.
Jeanette Wopata, electorate, I also represent Tyrone Township Watch. You know what, someone spoke earlier, who didn't say his name, I think it's Dawn.
Dawn Holtz, 10226.
Thank you. Dawn, wondering why these ordinances and why people just do these things. Does anybody think it might be because they see us continually going around, re, what's called rezoning, ignoring certain things? I think the rezoning has a lot to do with it. I don't think, I think you guys are serious. And when I filed the complaint, it was amazing to me how long it took sending it by slow mail and then sending another one, and then me, and this guy clearly didn't have a permit to be doing what he was doing, which is dangerous. And then I was told, we can't just storm in there, Jeanette, but then we're told that we're supposed to be the eyes and ears and report things, but then it doesn't get done. So anyway, I don't really know where to begin, please Scott, when my time is up and I'll just continue later, but it's one thing after another. I just want to remind you guys, and it's about the survey, so that actually is on the agenda with the master plan. The Michigan Planning Enabling Act says, make careful and comprehensive surveys and studies of present conditions and future growth. When this is part of legislation that says, surveys are important, I don't appreciate being told several times, it's just a tool, don't worry about it, it's just a tool. No, it's very, very important. So I'm upset about how this survey has been handled. There's been many concerns, but I'm just gonna bring up the latest one, which came to my attention today when I tried to access my survey. And you may wonder why I've waited till last minute to do it, I'm going to wait till the last minute to do it. I want to see what other people are saying about the problems that they have with the survey, so that I can go in there and look at things and continue on and do my survey at the last minute. So what I did was I logged on, I got the error message that said, this survey is no longer available, please contact so and so. So I contacted the survey group, and what she, and I told her what happened, I tried from my laptop and I tried from my iPhone using the QR code. And she said, yeah, we turned it off, but we turned it on again, we just did that yesterday, it's turned back on. And I said, well, I still can't access it. This is back and forth in emails with Zach being copied. And then she said, well, just go to the township's website and try that. And I said, okay, that works for me, but meanwhile, my postcard says a QR code that I can access it. Now, if I didn't know to talk to her or get the information from her that I can go to the township's website, how would I know? So my concern is several people may have already tried and they've given up because they don't get access. And I'm not so sure that that was just turned on yesterday, and I'd like to find out when that was turned on, because we've had several people report that they have not, that they've been getting that same message for a while now. So it's not representative of the people when you can't, when the people can't do their survey. The other thing is, why are we doing, having Zach writing up the master plan, revising it, when we don't even have the results of the survey in yet, to know what the people want? That makes no sense to me. The survey comes first, then you look at it, and then you start making changes, in my opinion. So I did ask Zach in this email thread if he could provide us some insight in how, and I would like you guys to consider this, in extending the time that the survey is allowed for people to respond. And it be communicated in whatever way you need to do, whether it's emails, maybe a postcard yet, but this is important for people to know that they can get on there and do the survey. So I really hope that we can get an extension to the survey date and let people participate as it's meant to be. Same with Scott, I'm really disappointed in the questions. You know, it's a lot of runaround and it's like, why not just come right up and ask the question rather than beating around the bush? And then one example, to live near a lake, like, why not on a lake? I just, I know that surveys are written to get certain answers, and I don't like the way it's written, but that's me. Okay, and then the other one that Scott spoke about, did you guys know that your public hearing that got canceled and pushed August 17th is scheduled here, the same night that your visioning session is scheduled? Well, you know it, John, because you, you've talked to me on Facebook.
That was the intention.
You can have a visioning session with the community coming in and a public hearing?
We've got two different times, Steve. Six to seven.
Can I say date?
The 17th meeting, second meeting is always at six. And we talk in the public hearings, we start 30 minutes into the meeting.
But why would we have the community coming in for a visioning session based on the master plan that is not important enough to set it separate than a public hearing? That makes no sense to me at all. Am I, I don't, maybe I'm alone in that. Why would we do that?
You've got two different things.
I understand it's two different things, but, okay, go ahead.
So the visioning sessions that are scheduled, that are published right now, were scheduled on the basis of, we anticipated having the survey results back soon. Without having the survey results, we still wanted to try to have a visioning session, but there's always a potential that we'll add an additional visioning session to make up for not having that data available.
My question is, why is a visioning session where you bring the community together, people who maybe have never even been to the township all before, have them sit through a public hearing at the same time?
Yep. The visioning session's at seven, right? Or is that?
I think it says six to eight.
They overlap, the meetings overlap. Who scheduled this?
I guess my question would be either Ross or Zach would be, is a visiting session an agenda item on a meeting? Or is it separate?
It could be treated in different ways, technically.
But it has a date, in the way you guys set it up. You set up these specific visioning sessions.
We set it up the one way with these days, anticipating that we would have the data available to hold a productive discussion.
I understand.
Unfortunately, we don't have the data available.
That's not my, that's not my beef. My beef is, why are you having a community visioning session mixed in with a public hearing for something else? The master plan is important enough, we were considering having, you guys were considering having the visioning session. You guys were considering having the visioning sessions at churches, at different places. You would never have a public hearing there also.
No, you couldn't.
Exactly. So we were under the impression that visioning sessions are important, that they are a specific...
I have no idea what that is.
That is feedback.
Yeah, you got feedback.
Are you on Zoom?
I think someone's on Zoom.
I can turn it off, it's not working. What are you doing?
Keyboard.
I have my mic on.
Steve was asking the agenda item for next week, to make the public hearing, what is that for?
That's for increasing accessory size.
Which was canceled previously and bumped to the 17th.
It was bumped back because of a publication error.
Okay.
So it needed to be rescheduled. So typically, when that happens, they try to reschedule to the soonest available meeting or workshop, as long as a corral can be verified.
And I would assume the visioning session is not a meeting, not a workshop, it's a visioning session that should be dedicated to the public. We've waited a long time for these opportunities, so I hope you guys can straighten this out. And I want you to know it looks real messy up there. Whoever did the scheduling for it, it actually makes the planning commission look bad, because it's planning commission, having a public hearing, saying it starts at this time, and then saying that there's also a visioning session starting at this time, and people are like, what? What's, what's going on? So it would be nice to, I request that we get a separate day for visioning sessions, that it not be lumped up in with something else. And I guess that's it. So, and also, if you guys could please think of a way to extend the survey to allow people, apparently it's not important enough to wait on writing the master plan, so I think we should get everybody's opinions and surveys should be allowed to participate and extend that deadline, if you would mind. Thank you. Sure.
Anything else? Anybody else?
Yeah. John Fialka, 10th floor lake, or 10th floor, Lake Shore Drive. I live in Ranin Lake, I was in the year I settled, approved paving of the inlet to the road there, and it's working great. And the question I have is, you're asking, it's a private road, so we don't understand this whole, why you're asking for some...
It's what the township board requested.
Yeah, and we don't understand it, so we can't explain why. It's a private road.
We need to take that up with the township board. They're asking for verification of if something were to happen, that they'd be able to cover any liability.
I mean, it's a private road. If there's some lawsuit, they're gonna sue us, so they, they want some sort of...
It's just what the attorney recommended and what the township board...
I know, I know, but, I know, I'm saying why.
Have you asked the township board?
No.
We're not, we're the planning commission, we have nothing to do with it.
Okay.
The planning commission didn't place that on there. I don't know.
I just don't understand, you know, it's a private road. If somebody's gonna sue, they're gonna sue either, you know, the resident.
I'm not an attorney, I'm not qualified to explain that.
Yeah, okay.
So if you contact us tomorrow, we'd be happy to direct you to someone who can answer the question.
Okay. Well, I mean, you keep asking us to, you know, do something, right?
Which is my job, I'm given direction and I'm asked to follow up on it.
Okay, so, but you can't answer why, so I have to talk to somebody else?
Yep, you can talk to the officers.
Who, who?
You can try the supervisor, Mike Cunningham.
And then, so you were supposed to provide, we gave you $1,500 as a deposit or...
No, that was escrow, which is required for any application, which is required for planning commission, or planner review fees, engineer review fees, and/or legal fees.
Yeah. So, and then you just gave me a blank check, a blank bill for engineering services, and I asked for a breakdown, I wondered, are you...
That would be something you would talk to our accountant about.
I know, but I talked to you and you said you would get that, and you didn't.
Once we received the charges from the attorney.
No. I asked on the engineering fees.
I provided you everything that was provided to me.
It's just a bill, it doesn't say anything like, itemize what it's for.
Okay, if you...
And yet, when I talked to you, you said you would provide a detail, you would talk to the accountant and provide me some details back.
I'd provide you any details that they have. And, you know, maybe they have something additional, but that's what I was provided with, and that's what I sent you.
You just sent me a number, that's it. You didn't like say, like, they were here for an hour, you didn't say they paid for gas, you didn't say anything.
I don't get the invoices, I'm not the accountant, I can't do every function of the...
Right, I know, but I, I understand that, but I asked...
I don't know about billing.
Okay, but I asked for it, and you said you would get back to me and provide that detail, and it's been weeks. So, I mean, I'm just asking for it.
Okay, well, I'm doing everything that I can, but unfortunately, like I said, I can't perform every single function, I'm doing the best that I can.
And we did, by the way, grant you guys a pretty generous variance to pave that road the way you did, because of the, basically because of the constraints of the subdivision when it was originally platted and how narrow the...
Right.
...allowed amount of space was in that.
Right.
I think we were pretty decent to your, to your homeowners community there, providing you guys with the ability to pave that, which I wrote down before and after, and it is more...
It was also paved before the conditions were fulfilled, which is also a huge, huge convenience to you.
Yes.
So, I'm not saying we don't appreciate, you know...
No, but I'm saying that...
But I think in the end, it was a safety concern for the community for a private road, and it's worked out for the best for our, our private, you know, subdivision. So I think it's a good thing.
As a planning commission, we didn't put any legal restrictions on what we approved. Everything else you're bringing up to us today is news to me. And, you know, I would suggest personally that you come before the board, maybe Kurt would know more about this, but, but as far as everything else, we don't want board meetings, so I have no idea what happened there, but that would be, what I would recommend, if I was in your position, I'd come to the board and get those questions answered.
Do you have any further advice here?
I can't tell you what the attorney said on that, because I don't know where I'm coming from yet.
Because what I don't understand is, if the roads were platted in whatever, 1932, and it was way before any ordinance, ordinances were, you know, applied to that road, how, you know, why are they, you know, imposed now?
It's only because you chose to pave the road, you asked us to, if you could pave the road, so that was in accordance with the ordinance. Did you read that?
You can keep doing, keep the maintenance for ever.
If you wanted to face the unconforming of private drive, if you want to pave it, then you gotta follow these ordinances, which is the Livingston County Road Commission's standards. Do you guys want to follow that?
Well, I mean, we...
You could have, do that, you could take right away, you cut the trees down, you could done all that, cut the road up, but you didn't want to do that, right?
Well, I think it wasn't even peaceful, right?
I don't think it would have been.
Right.
Yeah, you could give up property, you've cut the trees down, you could have wiped it, made that right away. Could have been done.
Well, okay, I appreciate it.
So we gave you an approval to not meet that, to meet the standards that your community requested, and we approved that.
Okay, well, I, I mean, I appreciate it, I'm not clear on a private road, why, you know, they want some, you know, indemnification.
Were you talking about a whole parkless?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. I mean, that's, that's, that's a standard process.
When we made our motion, I remember that we had that in the motion, that the township would not be liable. That was in, in what we recommended to the board. Now, maybe the board...
The board regulatory...
Comes up with something and wants it more memorialized, formalized, whatever, you know, how do you want to do that? My suggestion is, come to the board.
Okay. All right. And then, just in regard to the survey, you know, we tried to do it online, on the phone, didn't work, so...
I got two of my house, because I have two pieces of property, and my wife did one and I did one, we had no problems. I don't know why all these problems popped up, but we did it when we got one.
I had no issue, I, there were a few issues, and they were, they went through troubleshooting and they were resolved.
So Ross, is the survey still on yet?
Correct. Yep, it's live right now. You can go on, you can fill it out, you can see...
And you can get to it through the township website?
Right on the home page.
But not necessarily your QR codes, I can't...
I don't know how that works.
Seeing as Zoom is not working, I've got a comment from someone on, that would have made it on Zoom, and it's on, can I make that comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
Real quick, okay. It's from Sarah Dolan, Jersey, and she said, visioning also needs to be on a variety of times and days, not only Wednesdays.
Let me talk about that. We'll let Zach speak to that.
Yeah, I mean, Zach said, Argentine Township, they didn't even do a visioning session.
We're not Argentine.
I understand, but, but, you know, I don't know where she's... Apparently, if Argentine Township did not do any visioning sessions, then I doubt if it's a requirement of the state for planning commission.
Probably isn't, but we're asking you guys, as our representatives, and I can tell you that Wednesday night is a big church night for a lot of people that will not come to a visioning session on Wednesday night. And it could be a regular night for other people for other things, so...
Any more comments? Okay, it will close call to the public. I'd like to request approval of the agenda.
Move. Sort.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the agenda in support, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? Okay, we'll jump to approval of the meeting minutes. So if you would pull out your copy of the meeting minutes from June 14th of this year...
Can you display them on the screen?
Excuse me?
Can you display them on the screen?
Okay.
Yeah, I think we can.
I got it.
All right. I have one comment, line 22, motion carried by unanimous, I don't think I spoke good.
No.
Yeah, that's spelling here, I believe, or... Okay, anything else on page one? Page two?
That's the wrong name. Line 141.
Line 141.
I don't think that was Kurt Kennedy, was it?
I mean, I assume they viewed the video and got the person's name, I don't know if it made a public comment.
I am pretty sure that's not who it is.
Okay, we can go back and check that.
Lives directly across the street, Marjorie Kennedy lives directly across the street.
Perhaps it is, I'm sorry if I'm wrong.
Well, yeah, because I went to school with Kurt Kennedy, but, or Kent, rather.
I mean, Kurt Kennedy, I believe, was the son of Marjorie Kennedy, who lived across the street at that property.
It was Kent.
So is there a correction in there?
I believe it's, I can't think if it's somebody else.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I thought it was someone else, but, I'm sorry. I don't know, we only got these last names, I didn't have time to go over them.
If there is an error that's found, it can always be amended at a later date.
Okay.
Yeah, because these, recognize these meeting minutes, once we approve them, still have to go to the board.
Okay.
So they can be corrected, yeah. We'll verify that. Moving on to page five. Page eight. Page nine.
Well, I, what general kind of Russell, do we usually have to say board comments?
No.
All right.
Here, put these together.
Okay.
It's just a minor style variation.
We should just say planning commission comments?
Well, it can say, or technically, the planning commission is a-
Okay, then it's fine.
It's proper. It's just a different style.
Page 10. Okay, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes as amended on line 122 for the time being.
Move to approve.
Support, anybody?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, meeting minutes are approved. Old business, the master plan. Well, we do have the unfortunate circumstance that Zach isn't with us here to really update us on the master plan. We've also heard discussions so far about access to the survey and the questions regarding the appropriate dates for the visioning sessions. Has Zach provided us with, well, I guess he has, with the dates for all of the visioning sessions that we have?
There are dates that are published that are still tentative. I mean, we can reschedule the next one if need be. There's no reason we can, especially if we're going to extend the survey deadlines. That's what's holding up the visioning sessions, is not having data available.
Okay, I'm just going to offer my opinion on this, but to me, having a visioning session without having the survey data is, I'm not sure there's going to be a whole lot of useful information spread around, except possibly an introduction to the master planning process itself.
I don't think it's completely wasted, especially if we're doing four visioning sessions. I'm okay with waiting also, but are we, is there a certain topic for each visioning session?
There's supposed to be. We gave them, Ross, we gave them four potential areas that they were to take a look at for the visioning sessions. And then they came back, I think, with a schedule of three visioning sessions.
I think the reality is we tried to put a timeline together the best as possible based on when we anticipated things would happen. I think it would be best if we have the data, because the benefit of having the data is that's how we formulate what the most important topics for visioning discussion are. So without that, it's kind of a shot in the dark, guessing. You know, obviously, putting the timeline together, it's a coordinated effort between the township and our planning consultant. And, you know, we try to shoot for, you know, the most optimistic timeline, albeit as conservative as possible. But sometimes they don't line up, and sometimes we need to reschedule.
Right. I mean, I hate to get into changing the timelines without Rich's input on this, since he is chairman of this, and this is his project. But on the other hand, we are short of having the data. And also, I suspect, if we're going to have four visioning sessions or three, we need to be able to address that. The other thing was, I think a question was raised in regards to why we would be drafting portions of the plan. And I believe in a previous session on that, we asked Zach to go ahead and start drafting the parts of the plan where there were no changes.
Well, yeah, right now, it's all mostly introductory overview explaining what a master plan is, explaining-
And a lot of the mass and stuff that aren't really, you know, more than facts.
And housing, that's what we had on page.
He's even got links in there where the survey data is going to come in.
Right.
And I think just updating some of the general landwork is fine to do, especially trying to keep this thing moving along.
Right.
He's still trying to use the framework that we have in place with our existing master plan as close as possible.
And we can all draft, and right now, we're on V2. We might have a V3 or V4, whatever it takes. So they're not set, though, because we just did that one.
Right.
You know, we get new info from the survey, but, you know, at least we get going and looking at it.
I think we've got it altered. If we're going to have a visioning session next Wednesday, that we should stick to that, because people might be planning on showing up. And let's just, you know-
We're having a meeting regardless. We can at least have a discussion and an update if there are any changes.
See what info we get.
We have a meeting. I guess the question is appropriate is to whether it should be a visioning session or introduction to the process, or whatever you want to call that, I guess.
That's something we'll need to work out between now and then.
I guess, would we, like, explain to me, and I was asked that here, I was just thinking, I would like to know how that visioning session is working. Like, how is it different from the meeting? We show up, we're here, or we, how's that going to work?
Well, the idea, again, conceptually, from what I got from talking to Zach, was that they would do a presentation, they being Carla Orman, whether it's Zach himself, or whether it's-
As Harper is going to bring me to-
Harper, that comes with them to help the process on. And that individual would lead the discussion on the various items that we would discuss that are appropriate for that particular visioning session, whether it was commercial, or whether it was housing, or whether it was whatever the four were that we came up with. And to tell you the truth, I can't remember what they are right off the top of my head.
Well, yeah, I think we need to, we need to advertise better to say, "This visioning session is on this topic." Because some people might be only interested in, you know, I mean, I don't know what they are, but it was like-
Well, I know that I heard, I think it was Osceola, Osceola, excuse me, township, was having a visioning session, and they actually announced it on the radio that the visioning session was going to be held at such and such a place at such and such a time. I know that public, the WHMI will do public radio spots if we want to get that information out there. It is tremendously short notice here to do it for next Wednesday, considering this is already Tuesday on the week before. So I, you know, I can see both issues. One, that you've already announced something, so you want to try to follow through with that.
Couldn't we just, because that was a regular meeting.
Right.
We have this a regular meeting and add an agenda item to discuss the visioning sessions. And like, at least we can maybe go through the introduction of it and- Because I don't think we want to, if we're only doing four visioning sessions with Carla Orman, we might not want to waste one yet, you know? I kind of, you know, that comes with the bill too, right?
Yeah, that comes with the bill. There is-
So if we're in with four, then I think we just discuss it.
I think the quote that we asked for, when they provided us, this is how much we would be spending on this, included four visioning sessions. That was the price tag on that.
So it's easy for me to say, let's add another, but I don't approve the bills either.
Yeah.
Well, we can do it, sort of, talk about it in form, and then I have a formal visioning session, where people have comments during the call of the public. They can sort of bring it up.
And I don't know how, what their format is. I would like to hear Zach go over what are the format of the visioning session is, because I don't know what that is.
Right.
And I think we need to, we need to come up with a forum and a method to have a discussion with the public, rather than just a council committee.
Yeah, and frankly, there is an issue with having a public meeting at the same time we're doing the visioning session. I know it can be done. But to me, that's maybe distraction, and whether that needs to be run that way, I'm not sure. And I have, again, I'm saying this out of order here, because I don't know for sure what Rich's take is on this. And he's the one who's chairing this. So it's difficult for me to sit here and say, "Well, I think we should do this, that, or the other thing," because that's technically not my place to do that. But I also know that as we move forward through the process of visioning plans, our workshop meetings, if we're going to dedicate them to the visioning session, means that we're certainly not going to carry a regular workload through a workshop process either.
Well, it certainly seems like that's what the crux of our work is going forward.
Yeah, we've been doing, we've been doing Wednesday workshops on master plan open.
Right.
So if we have a visioning session, I think we can, maybe not go through the drafts like we have done, but, you know.
Yeah, but if we're going to include other topics in there, and, you know, again, the workshop sessions are particularly helpful when it comes to trying to grind through some of the processes that we need to do. For example, one of the items that come to mind is the sign ordinance. As we go into the election season here, we have an ordinance that needs to be brought up to date and in compliance with Supreme Court issues. And we've been waiting three years to do that.
Who are we waiting for? And what are we waiting on?
Well, three is an understatement. Yeah, it's been going on for maybe six. McKenna worked on it, and then they passed it along. We switched planners. The next planner gave us a half-baked draft, which was recommended for approval, that we needed to backpedal, because it was just in draft format.
Right.
Was C W, Kyle Orman, who gave us the draft?
No, that was McKenna.
Oh, okay.
That was the board.
I'd rather stick to the plan, to the master plan until we kind of get it done, because this has been dragging out, and I think to try to put other stuff in there, if it's going to slow that process down, that would not be my purpose.
I guess it depends on what-
Stick to the master plan and try to get this thing moved along here.
Depends on what Zach's workload looks like, really, because if he's going to be taking over that monster of a sign ordinance that's a working draft right now, I mean, he may have enough time, and it would be built separately from the master plan.
Right, but, I mean, that's a-
Have that on a regular planning commission agenda.
Yeah, I think we should start having that on there. I didn't know it was so urgent to get it done before election.
Yeah, well, and that, there have been several other issues too. Sightlines comes up. But I know the sign ordinance is one that it's very tough to get, of course, a sign ordinance that doesn't pass muster with the Supreme Court.
We need a public hearing for that. We're not going to-
We need Zach to know. I don't know about these rulings or, that's not going to happen by November.
Not if we have to have a public hearing. We haven't even started it, so we couldn't start it even until September. And then you have to still schedule it.
Yeah, well, it's things that are going to come up. And see, the whole process is here, if you devote the workshop meetings to master plan, then you're not going to be able to do the nitty-gritty work that needs to get done in the workshop sessions to grind out the issues for the sign ordinance and the sightlines and whatever all else should come up with.
So move the visioning sessions off of Wednesday and keep Wednesday workshop. Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that's something that maybe you could consider. I will say Jeanette brought up a good issue with the fact that people are, go to churches on Wednesdays.
Yeah, I didn't take that one, but-
There are a number of churches in Tyrone Township who have Wednesday night services. So that would even eliminate using anything other than the township hall here for the purposes of having a vision session, because those churches tend to be used on Wednesday nights. So, I mean, all I'm doing is throwing a lot of issues out there. And I apologize for that, because I really don't have the, it's not my place to be putting those out there, but it's something we need to think about as well.
It needs to be discussed, because right now, we're in a little bit of a delay just due to the survey results.
Right.
When do you think that will be done?
Well, it depends. I mean, if we cut it off Wednesday, then it's possible to have the data put together by next week, the following week potentially. It has been active for over a month.
Are we going to?
It doesn't matter.
What is it, when is it set to close?
The 10th tomorrow.
So are we going to, need to make a determination tonight to extend it, or?
That's going to be, I think, up to the officers, but I can bring a recommendation.
Okay, yeah, that would be up to the township officers, but the question is, we could make a recommendation on that to extend it. And then if you're extending it, there are possible requests, so you have to recognize that.
Then that's, maybe the decision.
Well, what's the cost? Just updating the website?
Somebody who's doing the work.
I don't know what's involved. It may not be much.
Just turn it back on.
It may be insignificant.
If there's an issue with it, I think we should leave it open for at least another week? How about another week?
And communicate it to people.
Yeah, put it on the, could you put it on the township website, Ross?
I will pass the message along.
And I know you guys have the email that you send out to everybody, the BLAST, or whatever. Maybe you should send that out and say, "Hey, get your survey done. You've got until the-"
Are we trying to say the 17th?
Yeah, keep it open until the 17th. Put it on the township website, so people know that. And put it on there, it will not be extended again, so that people will-
I'll run it by the officers.
Right, right, that's a recommendation.
I can't make that.
I don't know if we need to vote on that, but I support that.
Ross, you should put it on there. Make sure, if you can't do nothing online, tell them you had a hard time.
Okay. We've been giving out a lot of-
Does it, does it vote on it? So, hey, are you, the motion on the floor is to extend?
We don't need a motion.
You sure you don't?
Not for that, not for that master plan procedure at all.
Okay, we'll simply agree that that-
Agree. Because you're not making an official call or official recommendation. It's just, I'm going to bring it to the officers and they'll miss the call.
So that would leave the question about a visioning session for next Wednesday.
Yeah, and that's something that doesn't need to be officially decided tonight. Well, can't be officially decided tonight, because the master planning is a coordinated effort between the township officials, which includes, well, the board too.
I think we just decided to do not want to make it official.
We can suggest, we can suggest that we just have it as an agenda item, where we discuss the visioning session going forward.
And that way, also, we could have a public meeting without-
The visioning session being interrupted.
Yeah, without the visioning session being interrupted.
So the, the, the regular meeting will start at 6:00. Public hearing at 6:30 still? And then can you have Zach update the website regarding the deadline?
Just the data that workshop was right here.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'll talk to him about that.
Is Zach going to be here next week?
As far as I know, yes.
Okay, because getting into the visioning sessions, I think that needs to be pointed out to Carla Orman. They must be here for that. I can't emphasize that enough, because they're-
Oh, I know that they were going to be here next Wednesday, if everything worked, if the stars aligned.
Zach, that's what Zach said, is that he was going to bring one of the partners or one of the higher-
Yeah, there was somebody else who was going to help do the-
I don't know what this noise is.
Do we have a live PA system? We could just turn it off.
Well, then we don't have microphones in here, and we don't have video. The microphones are tied into the video. No, it still reports to YouTube. It's live streaming, yeah. It's live streaming, yeah.
Well, good, let's be solved two problems today.
Yeah.
Where do you go?
Any more discussion on the master plan?
I mean, do we want to go through what he said?
I think that might be a bit of a waste of time.
I'll try to hear why.
I'll leave it to you guys.
No, I mean, I went through them, and I'll continue to go through them for the next meeting.
I think most of what he wrote there or was bringing up, other than the new data that he had from the census, was, you know, fairly boilingly stuff. But if you want to go through that.
No, we've already seen a lot of them.
These are all updates to existing documents that we previously reviewed. He basically made changes based on the comments and additional data.
I would certainly like to rather get the survey results back. I think that's the really key to moving forward.
Right, because, yeah, without having all the data available, it's up to discuss what people's take on the issues that we are dealing with is.
Absolutely.
Okay, then we'll move on to new business, which we don't have any of. So we'll move on to call to the public. This is the last call to the public.
I have another one from Sarah Dolman, Jersey.
Okay.
Okay, Sarah asked me to make this comment. She said, "The suggestion to host visioning on days other than Wednesdays was not a legal reference. Given that the master plan is the only document that reflects the vision of the people for the future of our community, I would think the planning commission's top priority would be reaching out to the people in any possible way they can. To suggest that visioning isn't required is disappointing. Why are we not focused on reaching the people, connecting with them, and fully understanding their vision in this endeavor? A coordinated outreach that affords opportunities for residents to engage in different ways, on different dates, at different times, promotes genuine engagement. That is the ethical way to do this important job well. Please consider a more coordinated effort to reach the people and inform them as to when and how to engage."
That's basically what we just talked about.
Yeah, you can tell her that we apologize for not being able to use the Zoom process to welcome people from online into this stuff. That's unfortunate, we'll try that.
Yeah, I think she's talking more about the visioning, not the commenting tonight.
Yeah.
And it was said maybe we need.
Yes.
Karen Morgan, Carter Road. This is my first meeting, so thank you, gentlemen, for all of the time and effort that you put in. I know it is pretty daunting. The meeting, I guess I'm not familiar with the two different types of meetings that are overlapping. Am I correct in understanding the visioning and the board meeting at six and seven?
Well, the planning commission itself meets on the second Tuesday of the month at seven o'clock. Normally, any public meeting is also a part of that meeting. So the regular meeting is suspended, public hearing is held for whatever the issue is, and then we move back to regular meeting. On occasions, on the second Wednesday of the month, we, or the third Wednesday of the month, we hold our workshop meeting, which starts at six o'clock. And sometimes when we have work that wasn't completed during the regular planning commission meeting, it spills over into that workshop meeting. And so as long as we have a forum available, we can conduct business such as a public hearing. So on occasion, that happens. It's not regularly scheduled that way. So I'm sorry, Tantr.
No, not at all. I appreciate your clarity there. So are you hoping to have residents attend both meetings? Or are they both held here in this location? Where the visioning, where you're doing.
It's going to be all with us. I think the plan was for it to be here.
Okay, so it's just continual, is that, am I incorrect in understanding that?
Yes, and the way this is shaking out as of what we just discussed here, we will probably just have the agenda item of the master plan rather than a visioning session, and then have a public hearing for the.
An application.
The update at the workshop meeting.
And so then my next question is, a purpose of the visioning session? What is its purpose?
Well, the purpose of the visioning session is to provide input from the community to the planning commission and to our consultants in drafting the master plan.
So is that incorporated even after our survey deadline has been complete?
Yes.
The intention is that we will use the survey data as a tool to provide those people who don't come to the visioning sessions, their input into the questions that the master plan creates.
So if the deadline passes, tomorrow is supposed to be the deadline. My husband was practically looking at it tonight. And so we're extending it, from my understanding here. If even people have not gotten to that point of extension to get their survey in, they can plan a visioning, they can attend a visioning session to have their views incorporated into the plan?
Yeah, the survey is going to give us direction of kind of where the community wants us to go. But then in the visioning session, people would come in there verbally.
So it's a working document, Zach is going to continue tweaking it until it's incorporated.
Right, people will come to the visioning sessions and tell us how they want to see the township move forward, basically.
Okay, so that won't, there won't really be a final until the last visioning session?
Yes, further into the year.
Okay.
And then there'll be public hearings for the master plan before we adopt it. And meetings probably after visiting sessions. Probably talk about the master plan at every meeting for the rest of the year, right?
Probably.
I mean, I'm not saying every single one, but so far we have. I don't think you've had a meeting in.
It will be a permanent agenda by definition, at least for the end of the year.
So that's another way to provide feedback, provide your comments, is come to the meetings. Just like you're doing now.
Okay, so and then there's a cost to having those meetings with the Carroll company?
Yeah, they charge money.
It's part of the overall fee for the developing of a master plan.
Right, and it was only four.
We could have more if we want, but there'd be an additional.
An additional cost to us, yeah, so we know we're doing. I mean, if we can, if we schedule them, I guess my, you know, being fiscally responsible, if we can, if we're going to have them within here, I was hoping to meet him tonight. If we can have the objectives of each of the planning sessions or the vision sessions, so residents would know what to come with, and they would know, you know, Zach would know what we're trying to accomplish, so that would be clear before.
We're going to develop that and tighten that up at the next Wednesday's meeting. And we can have that laid out. And I would also comment that the master plan is an important enough document, extremely important document for the township going forward, that if we got to pay for an extra meeting, I don't think anyone at the board or the planning commission would have any problem all of that. Because planning, the master plan is a required document, and it is also a very important document because it does also, if we get sued for denying a rezoning or something like that, it also forms basis for our defense.
It's a long-term commitment that we're making as residents.
Ten years.
Okay.
One of the things that, and I would make another comment here, I'm sorry. If we don't really have a field for yet is, this room holds sixty people at the most. I don't know how many people will show up for a visioning session. If I have six hundred, obviously, we don't have any room for that. So I don't know how to plan for that. And obviously, I don't want to have to have people say, well, I need a reservation to get in. But using the township hall does have a limited capacity. Obviously, you could hold it outside here, but that's, that is dependent on the weather, and it's also dependent on how well we could set up something for people to participate with. So nobody has even mentioned that issue yet, because I really don't know where we're at.
What was the capacity of the Zoom meeting when we had the asphalt plant? What did we hit? We were definitely.
We were just raising a hundred at the first.
Yeah, we were.
But there was a couple times.
We went over a hundred. Yeah, but that was right around a hundred.
Yeah.
But that was also a call from your home. I bet you Zach would have a pretty good idea how many, based on how many people come here and what the township size is. I bet you he would have a pretty good estimation.
I mean, you know, he could probably give us a guess.
We don't want to cut it off.
Again, I don't know. I mean, we might be special, and nobody shows up. We might be special, and everybody shows up.
I don't know the capacity out there.
How far can you let us move up? I mean, how far up to the board can you reach you? Like, would we be able to set up chairs up in the front? Would you be able to see your faces maybe?
I don't even know what's going to happen.
I don't even know if we have enough chairs here to.
There's a good amount of chairs. I mean, they can, you can fit probably double the capacity of chairs that's currently set up.
Yeah.
Yeah, with elections and the.
But, you know, comfortably speaking, you're talking about sixty people. Here it is.
But one thing I'd like to see at the visioning sessions is a pretty minute time limit. Because if we got sixty or seventy people on the talk.
Visioning sessions last time.
You know, I think that.
We didn't have that.
That would be, neither would.
It depends. I mean, I guess you'd have to see how it goes.
Yeah, well, I think we said an overall time limit. And that says sixty eight. Open that same hand I said today. And that's why I feel bad if people's move here. If they want to speak and they don't get a chance to talk, there might be some people who are going to be up there. Potentially, that's that.
Anyone else?
I just raised my hand.
I'm just.
Dawn?
Dawn, not Dawn, Dawn. Aside from having a resident have to record this meeting, let's fix the system.
I'll always record.
It is not extreme. However, having comments come through you, to the board, to the public, may not be appropriate, because it may not be enough of a wider debt that the public have. So we've scheduled some Zoom meetings, we've tried to get that done. The technology is there, folks. It shouldn't be up to us, it shouldn't be up to you guys. It really shouldn't be given. Encourage the board of directors to get this thing straightened out, please. When did the plan, master plan process start? Six months ago?
It's been going longer than that.
Nine.
We got tied into COVID, so we started just above the time COVID did.
Really, let's not bring that up, okay? Forget that stuff. It is a requirement of every township to do this. I think it's a five-year thing, not ten-year.
You gotta look at it after five, I believe.
Review.
So it's a requirement that we have to do, and it's a needed requirement, especially when things are growing, and when we grow. So it's all a discussion about visioning and this and that. We put out a survey, the data is important. It is our duty to try and get as many surveys back. Do you realize what the general percentages of surveys coming back on any time you send them out? Could be ten to thirty percent. Generally, the middle's about twenty.
We got thirteen percent when we sent one out for the, whatever that survey was.
Now, wait a minute. Let's not bother trying to push this out. Let's not bother trying to phone every resident, return their survey in. Look, it's been published, it's been sent. Let's not make excuses for residents that don't have the right equipment or don't want to bother to fix their problems with their internet or their web browser. I've had them too. I've got them. We're not going to fix that stuff. So the survey data is important. All right, do whatever we can, finish that up, then let's go to meetings, okay? Because that is important too. I remember when we had certain meetings to try and get police and fire protection here. It took us a few months. We had many different meetings, we had a lot of resident participation, and we got an assessment. Not another. This fire service is important to anybody, no matter the value of their house or the number of people in our house. So the survey is important. Let's get that done, finish it up, give it a date, and get on with it. The sessions that we want to have and that are needed, if they're published, that's great. Break people in. I don't care if it's sixty, six hundred, we'll accommodate somehow, all right? So continue with the publicly stated sessions that we have. That's my recommendation. But be ready to record the data and have that on a type of a systematic system so that we can record. It doesn't have to be with this. It has to be like a secretary saying, all right, shorthand, all right? How many documents were made about this? But be ready for that, because it's important. Because the public that we're going to ask in the survey and in the vision year assessment, we have to be ready to take the comments and questions, all right? So it's important, but you need to have some rules of order when these things go on. You don't want it to get out of control, because you want to hear everybody. Because it's difficult for some people to speak in public. So encourage it. So be ready to accept the data, be ready to record the data, and encourage participation. But move on, you've got a schedule, don't stop it. Let's go, it's been a long day, okay? So as far as I heard Zach talk, is he with Carlisle?
Yes.
What does he have anything to do with our website? It's a website specifically for the master plan.
This one that's up.
That's generated.
It's his website.
Carlisle's put that together?
Correct, yeah.
So that's a separate website from what we have here?
Correct, yes.
Okay, all right, so that's part of his compens, their compensation.
That's part of the compensation.
So they presented a package, wasn't at that meeting. Okay, thank you. But move forward, go with your schedule. Get the participation, be ready to record the data so that we can get a thorough master plan done. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Jeanette, we pass, pull the drive. I just want to say about the comment that people should get their equipment fixed. Okay, I don't think Dawn was here to know the problems that we've had and to suggest that this is the resident's fault. And for anybody listening into the recording, that's wrong. It's not, and even if it was, we need to make this accessible for all residents. So I'd just like to push that on that. First of all, I want to say whoever does the minutes for these meetings, thank you. And I think it might be, do you do them sometimes?
I do most of them sometimes.
You do, yeah, and you do a great job, you're detailed. I do appreciate you doing that. I also want to say, this is not Zach's fault regarding Zoom. This is unbelievable that it's put on Zach. We spent thousands of dollars last year that the township approved to update our video recording equipment. I called and asked why we weren't able to use it for those subtle meetings, and I was told by the deputy clerk that the township didn't want to pay for a maintenance agreement, so they waited until somebody could do it for free. And if it breaks again, we'll sit and wait again until someone will fix it for free. This is from Terry. Unsetful.
Before you were talking about Zach, you were saying it was Zach's fault.
It was just not Zach's fault. Sorry, Ross, sorry. So I'm used to looking.
Zach just appeared.
Okay, so I'm used to, I'm used to looking at them both sitting over there. I looked at Ross, he knew I meant him, and I'm sorry to everybody listening, and I meant Ross. And it's not Zach's fault. So Ross, again, thank you for all that you do. Also, it was asked how long we've known about this, so eighteen months, we were told. I almost said professor kind of. We were told by, uh, I almost said professor Cunningham, the supervisor Cunningham that we were needed so bad. I have a solution for what's going on. It's not too late, you guys. I can name at least ten people, including myself, including Sarah Dalton Jersey, that would jump in right now and help organize this. The fact that we're talking a week before what was supposed to be a visioning session and nobody knows what it was going to be like, what the topics were going to be, how the, it was going to be laid out. I think you guys could really benefit from a citizens group getting together and helping you guys with this. I would devote all kinds of hours to helping. And it wouldn't be me. It wouldn't be my decision. It would be a lot of people talking and putting things together. So I just don't understand why we're not asked to be involved. We would love to help. We'd love to, I would love to say, you know, we have a, a visioning session here. My husband's a musician. He has all kinds of sound equipment. He would set up there and if the weather's good, we could have it outside. He's got microphones, lapel microphones, everything. And we would do that for, we would, we would do that to volunteer, to help our township.
That's already, you know, that ship's already sailed and it wasn't our decision.
Why didn't you guys speak up and say for us that you want us to help?
We deal with things we're told to deal with.
Okay. So, and that's what I've said from day one. You guys are told what to do and then.
No, we're told, we're given our task and that's what we do.
Well, it's disappointing because you guys are all appointed or elected. I'm sorry. I don't even know.
Born and appointed.
Born and appointed. Okay. Unfortunately, with this master plan, we cannot see, I found out last time, we can't see to compare it to the old one, what's in the news. So what we have, it's, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So, and I think we talked about this in the other meeting, but like the version one and two, this is always Zach's version. We're not comparing it to the 2012 and up. He did use that for it. You'd have to just open it up and look at it. But each, all these red lines on here are just version of the next.
Yes, I understand that. So I'm just clarifying for people listening in. If you think that you're going to go to the old master plan, that many of us have studied and be able to see what's been changed, that's not how it works. Zach has created something new that's based on pieces and things not yet.
He's doing more than just editing, I guess.
There's new sections and he cut out some sections, I believe.
Right.
Yep. And what I'm saying is for people listening in that have studied that, they can, that's not the way that it works. Okay. I think that, I'm glad that you're postponing it. I hope that, that Ross, that, that that'll be announced on the website. But I also hope that you can push for an email to go out to update everybody, explain what happened. Hey, we don't only do this every ten years. Thanks for, you know, bearing with us, whatever it is. But this is setting the tone and I'm so glad we're not having a visioning session coming up because it just looks like it's just not important at all. Nobody knows how it's going to be conducted or handled or what's on it or, you know, that kind of stuff. I do understand that you say that ship is sailed. I don't really.
Yep. I mean, like I said, it's not an decision.
Okay. But I think, I think Steve, that you could go to the supervisor and say, well, this is way more work than what we thought and we've got residents that want to help. Can we not create a couple of little committees, put them together, have them do certain things that we need to get done, that you guys don't have time to do, that Zach doesn't have time to do? I don't see how that should be a big problem. And I'm asking, in fact, I'm asking you, Steve, if you would please approach, if you would approach him and ask him if that's something that could be done. And you know what? If it makes them feel better, tell them Jeanette Wepeta will not be a part of it.
I, I'm gonna have to decline that.
Okay. Would anybody else like to ask him if he would mind if a group of citizens got together with specific tasks?
Well, Jeanette, I'm not going to tell you that that can't happen, but there, you're, we're paying Carlisle Wardman to do the work. And so I, I think we have an obligation to have them at least get most of the stuff put together before we say, okay, uh, community, here's what the master plan is going to look like.
Well, I think we could go by direction under Carlisle Wardman as well because he has said many times that he doesn't have time to do certain things. So he could be assigning those things to us as well. I think it could be a wonderful community effort. And I really, I, I implore somebody to please represent the people and ask if this can be done. We've got a note from Steve, John, Kurt, Bill.
The plan, the master plan is not just the planning commission put it together. There's, there's input from the board.
Yes. And there should be input.
And we don't control any of the budget or any of that. So we, we don't.
I've not said any of that.
We don't pay them consultant. So they agreed to that plan, that they're, the board's paying for it.
And he says he doesn't have time to do certain things. So I'm asking again if we could get involved. I don't think that that's a big ask.
And Zach said this before. It's always been an option. You know, the draft documents are here on this website and they're in the meeting pack. So if there's, I mean, so far, we're only through three sections, but we'll keep going down the list. As you get comments and you want to do that, mark it up and send it to the planning commission through the email. And we can, we can read those comments.
Okay. So John, I repeat this again, my emails don't get read possibly, don't get answered, possibly don't get read. So.
Ross, do the emails that go to the planning commission email address?
Anything that goes to planning commission that I give.
It goes, it goes to Rich. So if Rich doesn't pass it on, maybe not, but at least Rich has given it. So.
So again, I'm going to ask if.
Copy me on that if you want.
I'm going to ask if somebody could please approach him, ask him. And if it makes everyone feel better, you can say Jeanette Wepeta will not be involved. And I can direct you to several people who would like to be involved in help with this. And I think it's really unfair that nobody will stand up for us and say that they'll edit that stuff.
Scott.
All right, Scott, I'm pretty quickly. The issues are from day one is Zach does have some problems. And I'm very disappointed because the fact, there was information that we got after the survey was put together that we needed, like the age of the people, the age of our, you know, constituents, township, you know, you know, obviously, that's stuff that we needed to put this survey together. And I'm very disappointed that we didn't have all of it. That's stuff that shouldn't have been put together first. So that's, we kind of missed the ball on that one. Hard copies, if you remember, people were coming in and they weren't prepared yet to get them. I got mine here. I gave you, I came, I made the cards. But, you know, the week's pretty good. The week's pretty good. You know, you can only go so far. That's right. You can only go so far. There's so many people out there. I doubt it. We'll get twenty people in this room. You got the same old people that come to meetings. They're the troublemakers. That's what we're called. No matter how hard we try it. Our supervisor is, is butthurt like a sawing gun. He doesn't like to be challenged. And he's still hurting from the asphalt plant. There was a lot of things that, and I'm going to say this, I'm going to commend you, buddy. Our leadership, our plan, you guys are appointed. You're not, you're the only one that's voted. I will commend you, my friend, for standing up. He's the only one that stood up. And everybody else cowedly said, well, we kind of look at this for most of, we can't, no, hold on. You're a citizen first. Steve was that citizen. Steve was that citizen that stood up and says, you know what? I think it's going to go there. We're going to take your application and we're going to go with it, but I can't see it happening here. Steve was the only man they had the balls to stand up and say that. He was a citizen first. And he knew what the people liked in this township. He knew what they don't want. And that's where you go, that's where the problem is. You guys, you come up here, we want to know where you're coming from, you know, especially a bunch of officials. So, you know, there's no transparency and, you know, so people get mistrust. So there was a lot of things that I stood up for the board in the beginning. I'll go back and look if I have to. When people were cutting down the board on this asphalt plant. And I said, listen, you guys, they haven't come out standing yet. It just went on too long. It went on way too long. And there's a lot of bitterness over that. You know, it's not, you shouldn't. That's what comes with the territory. It was very emotional. There's a lot of emotional things that go on in this township. But we electric officials, you know, when they run, you know, they stand for something. Stand for something, you know. You got neighbors that says he wants to do this with the township. Fine. Say, yeah, okay. But we're going to tell you right now, we're going to take the application, but this is my personal opinion. I don't like it. You're entitled to that. Because I'm going to do everything I can under the law to put your applications. That man was the only one that did it. And that's, you know, and I'll commend him for it. Thank you, Steve.
I think the whole board was.
Well, no, but I'm just, you know what I'm saying.
But you know what? But I was. You said we were covered.
Yeah.
No, no. That's insane.
Yeah. Don't get me wrong. What I'm saying is the people get all bent out of shape because of, and so there's a lot of talking and a lot of mistrust. And it's not fair, but it just went on so damn long. But the problem is now we got a supervisor that's so damn hell bent on not trying to push that behind him. Is that he just wants to hold the grudges and he doesn't want to work with you. And you are right. These guys are appointed. So they got to go by the direction of our supervisor. So they're told what to do. They're told what, they can only do what the man tells them. So I will stick up for them on that. But that's where your problem lies. Our problem lies with communication from them, the office, and our supervisor. And these guys, they say, but Zach, your loss in that meeting. The other one was canceled. So there's two meetings. So like I said, the week's enough. I agree it down. We got to get this thing going. I mean, but if we get twenty people in this room, we might get more where I'm, I assume, but I don't think we're going to get six hundred people.
But why is that? Why are people?
I don't say recognition because they don't.
Because they see.
Because it's not, if it's not affecting them, they're next door and I have to say.
Okay. It's a ear, ear, public comments to us.
Yeah. No, she asked. But anyways, it, it, it is what it is. People only react if it affects them.
Yeah, the townhouse, the town, yeah, the townhouse was a pretty emotional subject and we only got thirteen percent of the survey.
Yeah. And you ask people, they just don't get involved.
So, so we, we accommodated the request to extend the survey from seventeen with the idea that not people could do it, but like Don said, we need to move this forward. You know, and we had it from both sides. We're trying to, we're trying to accommodate everyone.
Like I said, there's some problems.
Personally, you know, just, you know, this, it, it's getting annoying.
Yeah.
The, the way that the board here is treated personally.
I don't care. I, I, I don't really care.
We, I know, but, but we're, we're trying to do the best we can.
You're not.
And it's wrong. And all we can do is with all things that are given.
Well, you know, this goes back a long ways.
Yeah. The, the mandate we're given is what we have to follow. And that's it. And that's all we can do. I mean, we will be overstepping our bounds.
I just said that.
And doing, right, and doing things that we shouldn't do. So we're trying to accommodate everyone. We're trying to please people that want to have the survey extended and then people like Don that want to have it wrapped up.
He said, but I, I've heard here, I've heard feedback. The man doesn't, is not going to work for certain people and that's it. And that's it. The man's, so he would have had to spill the wall and just, I mean, it's out there. Words travel in this township. I mean, it's not that big of a community. He, he, he doesn't want to work for certain people. And that's, that's all there is to it. You know, but, you know, I'm sorry, but I think he said, he said, since the asphalt plant, there's been time to get that thing, it could have been smoothed over a lot and I don't think it's going to be. And I'll look for everything I can. Next election, get his ass out. That's out of the record.
I know I've spoken, I just want to apologize if I, I, I thought elected officials would still go to bat for the people. I didn't realize that you take a mandate and that's it. So I apologize for even asking to do something.
You're saying to elected officials?
Or to, I, I apologize, sorry. I apologize for asking appointed officials to go to bat for the people. I didn't realize that you're given a mandate and you do as you're told and then that's it. I thought that even though you're appointed, that you would step up and, and go to bat for what the people are, are asking and saying. So.
For what you want?
Pardon me?
For what you want?
Well, for what several people want. Yeah. What the community wants.
We're willing to accept all kinds of comments on this master plan and this is a written document. I haven't seen one written comment yet. The only comments we ever get is the website didn't work and stuff. I mean, I get that that's a concern, but that's not, I'm not the IT guy.
Well, I'm telling you that I have sent things in and I have sent them to Rich. So if you guys haven't gotten them, that's not my fault. I, none of your email addresses are on the, on the, on the township website. How am I supposed to get ahold of you guys? Yours is because you're on the board, but you guys aren't. So I send to Rich and say, share.
And this is like written comments on the master plan for Janet?
I, on, okay. So anyway, I'm just stating what the facts are. I, I, again, what I'm saying is I'm sorry for asking you to go to bat for us if you're not able or allowed to do that.
Thank you. Anything else? And we'll close public, public comments. No miscellaneous business, so I will entertain motion.
One miscellaneous business item, the Hornbacher special land use application was withdrawn.
Drawn, right. That's the center of the one?
Yeah.
Yeah. How long?
Is that marijuana facility?
No.
They need to tie on hills, cross Tywin Hills, two hundred millimeter bar. Freshwater law company?
The contract is limited to orders.
That one withdrawn?
Yep, that was withdrawn.
What are you talking about?
Yeah. Center row.
I was wondering. Because I thought it was.
Remember they didn't show for the public hearing?
Yeah.
Is that there? Yeah.
Well, that's a waste of time. You should be charged for that.
They were.
Maybe they said that the middle were.
Yeah. Yeah.
The caregiver one was also withdrawn.
What?
The caregiver one was withdrawn.
Oh, I saw they put the property up for sale. Didn't know they withdrew it.
Well, that was on hold, wasn't it?
It was. Yeah. No, it was a.
Was for sale, huh?
Yeah. They're, they're, they backed out.
They're out of it.
All right, guys.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. So the next.
That's. Just being honest with. So how will we get all those surveys? Are they going to come to us?
Uh, they're going to.
They're going to sort it.
Yeah, I'll still build and analyze them.
Yeah.
So he doesn't want to.
Good. Kurt, let's put it as to which, to board any emails he gets, even if they're whatever, just so we're not kind of. Yeah, we can say, hey, everything he gets, we get.
Zach just.
Yes, I, I never give, I haven't given, I'm in the mess.
I mean, I've never given him a message.
Never. I, I say. I would get things from her that she sends to the board, but not, she doesn't send.
Well, her, it's forever to me. I think they, I mean, if you physically take common state. I think we should have a section of this, this is. To say for all years. There's one, I'm never getting in. Red, there's nothing there.
Yeah.
And I said, time of the meeting, who would like to be staying in charge of the obvious issue?